Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 20th, 2017 regular board meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. I still, we also have a Boy Scout here tonight, Troop 39, you said. Welcome, Mr. Francis. If we all stand for the invocation of the pledge by Ms. Ann Crowe.
Heavenly Father, we are present here to use the gifts you have given each one of us for the good of our children. Guide us as we make decisions on their behalf and that of the community so that these future leaders will be prepared for what is to come. Our country is filled with a lack of civility, a lot of hate, and disregard for the truth, no matter who is affected. Help us to rise above this and lead it by example. Let us join together as a community that will reflect tolerance for differing views and respect for the laws of our nation. Amen. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do want to note that we have, it's unusual, we have a couple of board members absent tonight on this slide, and Mr. Cleveland could not be here, so for sake of ease, I will call the votes unanimous if it's just the three of us and not mention them each time. Do we have an agenda before us? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Nancy, a second by Ann, all in favor. That is unanimous. The first thing up on our agenda is a very long consent agenda. Agenda, I believe everybody's had time to review through that, so if everyone's okay, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ann, a second by Nancy, all in favor. That is unanimous. Next up, public participation, do we have?
No.
We do not have any public participation. So we get right to the good stuff. Presentation and discussion, first thing, foundation update, starting off with Hannah Samples.
From the bathroom. The door of the one.
Good evening. I had to make an entry. I didn't see where you were. Well, first of all, I would like to thank you all for your support of the Forsyth County Education Foundation and also for your nomination of our governing committee. We have five wonderful leaders in the community that lead this group, and we've had a great year of work for the foundation, and you will hear tonight from all five of them and also hear about the work that we have done this year as well as our next steps. And so tonight, we will hear about some of the work we've done, which is our grants, and the first ones we gave out this past year in September, our strategic planning session, collaboration and marketing, and funding. And at this time, I would like to invite our committee to come forward, and we will start with Brad Collins and with the 2016 grants.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having us. Just wanted to share quickly with you, just, you know, kind of a review of the 2016 grants. I think most of you got to attend, you know, the great session we had with the school staff when we got to award these grants. I think there was a lot of great, you know, great emotion that was given that day, and it was a, it was a great kickoff, so to speak, to start the work of the foundation. So, as you guys may recall, we started this off back in April, you know, and rolled out our 2016 grants. You know, when we looked at when we rolled those out, we had a great donation from RBM of Alpharetta, who generously gave us $10,000 to help support, you know, the schools. You know, we got 37 different grant requests that came in, one from each of the principals at that point, and as I'm sure you've heard, this number was just under $300,000 in requests that came in for a multitude of programs and projects that they're trying to do across all those different schools. So, you know, I can't say that there was any, you know, any one that was well above the others. They were all great requests, and there's a lot of great need that's out there. It was an interesting challenge to go through and try to, you know, take that $10,000 and split it up and get some meaningful work out there from, you know, foundation dollars into the schools. And so what you can see on your screens is, you know, the summary of where those grants went. So Chattahoochee Elementary School got $1,000, Coming Elementary had $2,500, Vickery Creek had $2,000, Lakeside had $2,500, and Ottwell had $2,000, Ottwell Middle School. And what's interesting is there's, you know, a couple of different areas there with, you know, Leader in Me and Seven Mindsets, which are big areas that the schools are focusing on to help further those programs along. You know, there's a great literacy program there at Coming, which helped with the Book of the Month program that they helped integrate into the overall teaching for the month, that the principal would choose each month. And then the STEM program at Ottwell Middle School, which helped them with raised, you know, plant beds and things that they could help bring into those science classes to help bring that, you know, outdoor, indoor classroom environment together. So, through your packet, you're going to see several additional slides that have, you know, there's some videos in here that are in your packets. You can look at those at your convenience. We won't take you through each one of those tonight, but, you know, they went back and as we went through the grant process, you know, we've started to ask for feedback, you know, from the schools. You know, how did, you know, you received the money, so now how did it work? How was the implementation? And we've had nothing but great responses so far. So, there are some examples from each of the awarded schools in your packet where you can look through some quotes, some examples of things that they've done through their different schools when they've had that money and moved those programs forward. So, let's see, so there's the STEM gardens at Ottwell. And then the overall, you know, kind of check presentation winners from that day, and then there's actually the follow-up report. There's a link there at the bottom of the screen, so you guys can access that as, as need be, if you wouldn't you like to read through, read through those and see the actual details from there. Okay, next, turn it over to strategic planning.
Hi. So, we have presented a revised mission of the Education Foundation, which is to unify the resources not ordinarily provided by the district's operating budget that foster innovation for increased student achievement. And establish, we've established short-term goals, such as our campaign for marketing and fundraising. Those will be, Janette and Donna will talk a little bit more about the marketing and fundraising, and we are hoping to develop some of those marketing and fundraising goals through the website as well, eventually. Another short-term goal is organizational structure. That would include bylaws, policies, procedures, as well as term limits for the foundation members. Long-term goals, of course, will be ongoing funding and fundraising. In one year, we would, or, excuse me, $1 million in three years is the first goal, and then $5 million in 10 years, with ideas on how to take milestones and approach those through a three-year and a 10-year time limit. A focus based on needs aligned to that lower profile to the social and emotional learning. We felt like it was important this year to look at other foundations and see what other people have already done. There's no reason to reinvent the wheel if it's already been done. We met with representatives from the North Georgia Community Foundation a couple of times just to talk about what we might do in the future when we actually have more money. We don't really have enough now to worry with. It still sits with the school system, but we have been just talking with them about the future. Hannah and I had the opportunity in December to go to Clark County and visit their foundation. It's the Foundation for Excellence in Public Education. It's been around since 1983, and they have almost $1 million in their foundation. So, it was very interesting to see. They have a very different take than we do, but it was very interesting to hear about it and, and visit with those folks. We're members of the National School Foundation, so Hannah's been able to do a lot of training with that. It's been very helpful in keeping us moving forward. We felt like we got a little stagnated at one point, but now we feel like things are really coming together. The webpages being redesigned, we've, our grant process is helping us with all the schools. Every school has different needs, they're very unique, and we want to address that. We want the, to try to spread the money around, but try to be very sensitive to the needs in the individual schools. They've also made it available for payroll deductions for the staff. All school employees can now make a donation, just like they would to United Way, to the foundation, and we are getting some money now from that, so it's been great. We just kicked it off last year, and we're hoping to promote it again this year. We also have some new marketing materials that are really close to being printed, and we hope to start. Donna will talk more about fundraising, but we're going to make a big, a big push for that this year. And there's a link on there if you want to take a look at our webpage. It's, it's looking really nice.
All right. Tina mentioned a goal, which is $1 million in three, which is a very lofty goal, but it's something that we feel needs to be done. If you look at, if we wanted to give $100,000 each year, if we got a 5% return on our money, we would need to build an endowment of $2 million. So, makes that $1 million not seem like such a huge amount for us to do. But with that, we need y'all's help, and we're doing it as well. We've put together, I like to call them investors, because I think we're asking people to invest in our children, invest in our future, and invest in our future leadership. And so you can see on your screen, we've put together donor sponsorship levels, or what I call investor levels. We are putting together an information piece to talk about the foundation, to talk about what it does and why we need the funds. We've started putting together our initial investor call list, folks in the community that we believe will be good resources to go to, to get that kicked off, not only in investing, but also helping us to go out and spread the word and identify other folks for us to go to. So, we would ask for your input in that, not only in helping us identify folks we need to go to, but also spreading the word about the foundation, too. Just this past year, in, where a million dollars sounds big, and it is big, and there's few of us to do that, so we do need help, just this past year Hannah has sent out letters to our vendors, to the vendors of the Board of Education, and in that effort alone, she was able to raise over $46,000. So, number one, great job for Hannah. Number two, I think that shows that people believe in our community, believe in, in our education system, and want to give back. So, we're excited about it, we're a little scared about it, and we ask for your help.
Is it appropriate just to say ditto? They did such a great job. I think they covered my, my slide for me. Thank you for the Educational Foundation. It's been a wonderful experience for all five of us, and, and I think it will benefit the, the community hugely. Nancy, thank you for that invocation. I think that's fantastic, and it's actually maybe the trend that we spotted when we were going through the grant applications last year, is all of our schools seem to want to have the social, emotional learning component at the school. And it's one of those things, unfortunately, our, our culture doesn't push acad, I mean, they push academics and they don't necessarily push the, the character side of things. And we see that as being important and the foundation for success for anybody as they go out into the community and use the academics they learn here. So, in our development of a fundraising, fundraising and marketing campaign, I think we're going to kind of wrap the whole idea of social, emotional learning and unity, finding things that bring the community together. We have a very diverse community, very different schools, but we can all gather around some natural virtues that will make us all better and be a good foundation. So, that's where we're headed with the, the campaign fundraising and marketing. I got great news on the grants. We're going to triple the amount we give away this year. We're going to do $30,000, which is fantastic, and mostly because of Hannah's work. We have some commitments for some big donations to the foundation, Beaver Toyota, that kind of stuff, so I think we're off to a great start. We have a wonderful story to tell as we go out and speak to more people in the community. We've had conversations with people about scholarships, establishing scholarships for specific disciplines, and we think that will happen in the very near future. So, not only will we have the grant process, the mini-grants that will benefit our educators, we will have some scholarships that can really go to encourage people in certain disciplines. So, the hard work of the application and the timeline and everything was done last year. We found it to go very smooth, and it was very successful. We just need more money. So, I think we have a link for you, and I'm sorry, I did not move forward there. We have a link for you on your screen to go see what the application timeline will be for this year. We're getting into the meat now of the organizational structure. We have some bylaws that we've been operating under, but we're going to kind of revise, refine. We've identified a couple of committees that we think will be important going forward, maybe a mini-grant committee that can actually really hone in on the success stories and why we're doing the grants. And obviously fundraising, which is going to be a big part of this with the goals that we've set. Policies and procedures. We really, we really have a pretty good framework in place from Hannah and Jennifer, but I think we'll continue to refine that. And then the website, once we kind of finish this work, we'll make sure the website just follows along. So, I guess all I can really say is thanks again. We really appreciate it.
Thank you all for being the trail boys.
Thank you. Thank you enough for getting the ball rolling, because it's been a longtime dream for a lot of people.
Just one correction, someone said something about term limits, that this is like a Supreme Court. This is the life. Just wanted to measure we got that correct.
Well, that donation from RBM, that really kind of threw you guys right into having to figure out how to use it, so it was kind of neat. So, you're kind of working backwards and figuring out your bylaws and procedures, so that probably helped you figure out what you needed to do, so it was probably a blessing in disguise, but it's going to be very interesting. You get all of those applications, you have a unique view into what our schools want to do, what's, what's unique to them, so that's going to be very interesting. So, I'm curious to see as time goes on, are a lot of the requests special interest projects? Or is there a reoccurring theme of certain equipment? Or, so it'll be interesting to see as time goes on, what you hear each year.
They certainly saw the theme of social and emotional learning last year, as they went through the grant applications.
Which is really great, because if you stayed around for the meeting, we're covering, approving our strategic plan tonight, and one of our main focuses is on the social, emotional learning under culture and climate. So, it really has come out even at our level in the, in the last few months when we've been putting together the next five-year strategic plan. So, it's really nice to see that's all tied together.
You can help bring it all together for us.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you for that. Appreciate the time you put into this.
Yeah, that's for sure.
And just, you know, I just wanted to say, on a serious, I mean, just, it just shows your level of commitment, the five of you being here tonight, since the summer, and we just really appreciate the commitment and the time and energy you've put into this, and it doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All righty. All right, now to the interesting stuff, finance report with Mr. Rick Gunn.
Busy man this week, haven't you?
Yes, today's been a, an interesting day as we go through. We received a, what they're saying is our final, final digest today. So, as we get to the budget approval, we'll discuss that and the changes that were caused by that. But it always seemed to do it on the day that we're doing final approval. Couldn't wait till tomorrow. Had to be today. Couldn't have been yesterday, had to be today. All right, so first I have our monthly financials for the month of May. You can see a beginning cash balance of almost $85 million. Receipts and disbursements leave us a balance of $73.79 million. We should end up this year right at $57 million in our fund balance. That's what we're projected to be at, which is right at the 15%.
So, we're hitting our goal.
That's our goal, to be, to be right around the 15. Revenues, year-to-date, we've collected almost 94%. We should make our, make our number, we should make 100% of that. We'll probably be a little under in ad valour taxes and a little over in title ad valour taxes, because the car's shifting from regular tax digest to the title tags, title ad valour tax, excuse me. Year-to-date budget report, as I said, revenues are almost 94%. Expenditures are at 98.92, and I believe we should be at 91.66. So, we're right where we should be expenditure-wise. Debt services, this month, we had a debt service payment of $16.189 million, represented the last of, last payment of one of our bond issues, which is a good thing.
Yes, that's a big day.
So, that was a final payment, leaving us a balance of $43,007 in the SPOST account, and in debt service, a balance of $9.5 million. You can see our bond and SPOST investments, the activity. You can see in column three, Fund 353, that's where the $16 million came from to make the bond payment. Also, SPOST revenues, you see, you can see 3.1, excuse me, $3,162,000 for that. And on this next page, you'll see that that's actually up from where we were a year ago, 9.96%.
Big jump.
So, 3.1 is a good number. We haven't had that in a while. Of course, 3.5 back after, you know, for Christmas, for that effect.
Easter chocolate, or?
Easter. Honestly, don't know, I'm not questioning it. It's actually up. So far, we've collected $162,002.2, and we still have June and July for those months to come in.
That's right, we're wrapping up.
All of our schools reported for the month. The ending balance for the elementary schools was $3.9 million. Middle, $997,000. High schools, $3,800,000. For a total of $8,700,000 that are at the schools. I know that number's big, but we have an auditor out there. He's, he's, he's gone through everything. Trust me. So, any questions on the monthly financial statements? We're tracking right where we should be for the year, and we should finish out where we budgeted.
Aren't there two other bond issues that we'll pay off this year?
We've already paid two off, this is the third.
This is it?
Mm-hmm. And then we have one, I believe, in February of '19 that drops off.
Right.
And then after that, we just have two, and then the revenue bonds for the Alliance.
Alliance, okay. So, last few years, we've really paid them off?
Yes.
Or you have?
No, I haven't.
The taxpayers.
I paid the payments, yes.
That's, that's excellent for our credit rating, I would think.
Yes. Yep. That's one of the things they look at, is if you're paying your debts off.
So, that's a good one.
Okay. That's it for me on that. If there's no questions.
All right. So, are we doing both of the policies?
Just, uh?
Just the one? Just the one? JRA?
JRA.
All right, so new policy, JRA Student Records with Ms. Carpenter.
Okay, this policy relates to parent complaints or student complaints if they feel like their data privacy has been violated. Basically, we've had a procedure for this in place for years, but when FOPA guidelines were updated, they require us now to have it in for policy. So, that's why we're adding on this. If you look at the list of one through six, that really just outlines our current, our current procedure into policy. Online, we have a parent complaint form that they can fill out and then submit to me, and then I respond with an answer to their concern within 10 business days. They have an opportunity to appeal that complaint to the superintendent, at which point he needs to respond within 10 business days. Ultimately, if they're still not satisfied, they have a third level of appeal to the local school board. That is the final decision-making body for any kind of complaint with FOPA, and that's really the summary of it. We have to respond within their timelines and go from there. Any questions? All right.
So, this will sit on the table for 30 days, and we'll act in July.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
All right, Policy or Business, G-A-R-H, employee leaves and absences with Ms. Beth Ebert.
Okay, and I believe you have this in front of you. It's just a couple of updates on the employee leave and absence policy, particularly under the prospective teacher leave section. And, and the main reason we're having to make this change is because there's been changes over the years with the way that universities conduct their student teaching. And so you'll see the first change that we're making is it did say one semester of study that we would allow, and typically paraprofessionals are the ones that fall into this category. So, it could be other employees, but it is paraprofessionals looking for their first certificate, certificate. And, and so, most universities, if not all, are now requiring the two semesters of student teaching. Some of them have an internship and then a semester, but it's, it comes out to a year. So, we went ahead and changed that to two semesters. The next two sections just have to do with leave, requesting leave, and then temporarily resuming work, and then going back to leave. Sometimes that happens. The other one has to do with maybe observations that need to be done for a couple of weeks, and then they want to come back for a couple of weeks and leave for a couple of weeks. We work with people, and sometimes that works out just fine, but sometimes, depending on what their job is, an example I can think of is if you're a one-on-one parapro with a specific student, you don't want to have that coming and going. So, we just want to have the flexibility. We truly do work with, with people as much as we can to try to, because we want them to come and teach. We're trying to help them do that, but, but that's the reason for those changes. So, that's it.
Same thing. We'll sit on the table for a month and vote on it in July.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Next up, some more exciting stuff, construction update with Mr. Tom Wedding.
Good evening.
Good evening. Those are some good pictures in here.
So, as a preface to what we normally do each month, just going over the nuts and bolts of the different projects, I wanted to do something a little different this month, and really look at the macro perspective of not only what we've done the past couple of years, but the nature of the spaces we're currently constructing. The Catalyst Day really was a conference last week that Tim and Greg and I had the fortune to go to, and it was learning environments, which really was a combination of academic seminars, best practices, trends in the industry, and really networking with our school districts, architects, and builders. And kind of the informal takeaway of that was 12 distinct trends that are emerging in the development of K through 12 programs. And it just really made me critically think. One of the, the great presentations I found real interesting was they looked at the spectrum of the learning experience and the different criteria that go into it. So, obviously, it starts with the students' skill sets, and the parents' support and involvement, teachers, administration, peer groups, but it also claimed that 15 to 20% of the learning environment creates the overall experience. That was probably self-serving, because of the audience being architects and builders that want to hear that, but nevertheless, it did make me stop and critically think. You know, there is some major component that goes into it. And then it dove into these dozen different aspects. And it also really highlighted the iPhone being a game changer, from the education that we all had to the experience today, and how you've really got to create a different learning environment. So, the other takeaway of that was really humbling reassurance that we're really addressing each of these dozen trends that were presented during that conference, and it even came up just earlier in the foundation discussion with collaboration. You see that in a couple of the bullet points in what we're doing. So, just to go over a few of the major issues, you know, and, and again, it wasn't the million square feet that we're building just for the basic need commensurate with the population growth, but the nature of education changing. So, customized learning spaces, you know, we couldn't have a better example of that than what we're doing at Alliance and some of the things we're doing with CTAE, and then that ties into the 11th bullet point of industry collaboration. Things that we're doing with comfort of the census, so there's no distractions, being that the LED lighting that we're putting in is just so much more vibrant, so you probably do take away a greater learning experience. Maker spaces, the huge priority that, that kind of the new world is putting on manufacturing and getting the United States back in jobs. So many maker spaces are being created. External learning, the example at North High School of the garden to table. So, you know, without rambling on, it was just really interesting that we are covering the bases that we should be covering, and we'll continue to strive to do that, not only in what we're currently building, but what we're building in the future.
Well, even in the furniture, the desk and all that are in these schools are so flexible.
Collaboration and flexibility and the rate of change, so, yeah, the FFNE all ties into that, and then just some things that weren't necessarily those 12. And then just some things that weren't necessarily those twelve components, what we're doing, working with Todd Shirley on safety and security on each of these buildings, the energy efficiency of the mechanical electrical units we're selecting being mindful. Information technology with Mike Evans and Tim Fleming's leadership and the ideas, fresh ideas and state-of-the-art technology that they're introducing. We are making some changes as we go on both Denmark and Alliance. But as much as that's a challenge, you realize kind of walking away from a conference and seminar like that of best practices that were right on target with what we're doing, and then looking at the maintenance compatibility, the thirty, forty-year life cycle of some of the materials we're selecting. So, I, I just thought it kind of interesting in the, in the summer to reflect instead of just going into the nuts and bolts of the program like we always do. But fortunately for the nuts and bolts of the program, we continue to progress extremely well. At West Forsyth High School, we are now repurposing the vacated space that was transformed into the new band and corridor area. So, that's art, computer engineering. We're well on our way approximately fifty percent through that. And I was just out there today. So, we're working on the interior finishes, working our way from the ceiling on, on down and out. So, that'll be done in mid-July. So, then a couple of our big jobs. This is Denmark High School. So, moving kind of left to right on the photo, the, the darkest three spots, you see a lot of site development happened, are the tennis courts. Even though we've had some wet weather, you do, do see now the various parking lots all taking form and shape. In the upper left-hand corner, we have started work now on the artificial turf football field. To the right-hand side of that, you see now work on the baseball fields happening. The goal there is to have all of the site and even the athletic fields transferred to our control in December. And that just helps with what Nathan's trying to do and Heather Gordy and some, as we redistrict, getting some of the athletics started even before the school operates.
That's a huge gift, right, planning?
That's for sure.
So, the building continues to progress extremely well. That job works about seventy hours a week, that project. And we're up to three hundred men and women working out there on a daily basis. So, the, the pace continues to be fast. Again, just to take you through the summary cycle, roofing is well on its way. The first section that you see, we call it Area A, which is the lower right-hand corner. That roofing is done, the windows are in, permanent power goes to that site. We're working with Sony in the next couple of weeks, which then gets us climate control, which then allows all the interior finishes. We start that August first, and then work our way through all the different sections of the building with climate control the November, December timeframe. And that gives us the three months that you need for rule of thumb interior finishes for an April completion. So, Denmark is, is well on its way.
Someone was asking me at church when, if we were going to have a grand opening, because he had been a patient or his kids had of Dr. Denmark, and knew a lot of other people that would like to come when we have that opening, which I think would be kind of neat, if we can do that. But I don't know. I told him I think it'd be in April.
Wow.
Probably.
That's really scary.
So, there's a closer view of the building facility, the other side of that with the gymnasium. God, this was interesting. Now that we are transferring to interiors, a good spectrum of colors. Again, it's the, the U N C Carolina blue, the lighter blue. The primary areas where we're really using the vivid colors is in the athletics and performing arts, public assembly, all the school spirit type areas with more of a natural wood and more of the natural colors in the academic environment. You know, just behind the scenes, there were two hundred and fifty different building elements to select a color for. So, you know, sometimes you don't see that first from the trees, and you don't want to get caught in, in the weeds of the detail.
Did you have to do that?
But, uh, well, Heather's involved for the bigger things. Delegate some of the smaller things and stay involved with some of the bigger things. Yeah, what the architect focuses in on, before you make the first selection, I want to see all two hundred and thirty-nine others so that they complement each other. An interesting process to go through, but I guess the, the takeaway is it does really tie back to, you know, the vivid colors. It's done in good taste, but it's not bland institutional and this whole learning environment. It'll be exciting. It's, it's a nice.
Beautiful color scheme.
So, yeah. Similarly, at Alliance, it follows, in general now, they're catching up with structure being complete. Very similar to the cycle I just described at Denmark with permanent power, getting into the site within the next few weeks, and then climate control, the building enclosures. We're working on the roof, chasing it through with metal panels that start next week, which is the big kind of aesthetic differentiator of Alliance. Some different shots. And similarly, that's the color palette of, of Alliance. So, the, the navy blue complemented with the natural wood colors. To our middle schools, we are substantially complete now with the punch list at Liberty, North, Otwell, Piney Grove, and Vicaray Creek, which is good to get that off our plate. And then moving forward on the elementary schools, we've got the Dave's Creek Security Access Corridor under construction. So, the program's going well. Any questions?
No.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent.
All right, Mr. Perkel, the local school council reports.
The local school council annual, annual reports to the board. I'll give those to you, starting with, first of all, let me do, let me say that I know how much you as board members value local school councils and how important that is to you as a board member or board members, knowing that you attend a lot of those meetings. Those that you don't, you certainly have the minutes available to you. And I know that you take that seriously and look over those. So, I said all that to say that if we do have, and they were invited, and we may have some local school council members in the audience, and I'd like to say thank you to them for their work and dedication, if they're here, and the time that they spend serving on the local school council. The elementary school, all of those schools reported for their annual report, all of having their correct number of meetings throughout the year. Of course, most of them typically have a lot more meetings than they're required to have. I just gave you a list of some of the general topics discussed. And this, again, is just a general listing. You've attended most of those meetings, and if not, looked through the minutes, and you're pretty much aware of that. We have several elementary school recommendations, as well as middle and high school. So, for the sake of time, I'm not going to read those to you. You have them in front of you. We have recommendations from Chesta T., Coal Mountain, Coming, Hall Creek, Johns Creek, and... Can't get the page apart.
Silver City.
Yeah. Kelly Mill, Matt, Sharon, Shallow Point, and Silver City. So, I will, as in all of these, I will make sure that you get, as board members, you get the information that you need for responding to all of these recommendations. Same thing for the element, uh, excuse me, the middle school report. All of those schools having their local school council meetings. You can see, again, general topics they discussed, school improvement, graduation rates, and vertical team conversations. That's a really big thing for them now, is they're, they've moved to vertical teams and having conversations about that. The schools who have recommendations from, from the middle level are Liberty, Piney Grove, and South Middle, with several. And then our high schools, same as elementary and middle. And the high school recommendation, the head recommendations were Forsyth Central, Lambert, and South Forsyth High School. So, that is the annual report for all of the local school councils for all levels. And again, as I said earlier, I will get all the information that you need for all of these recommendations, and get that together, and get that to you all for responding to all of those.
I thought there were a lot of the comments were very thoughtful, and it impressed me that the councils were very involved in discussions like that. That's very good.
And they're, and they, and they were, and most of, most were listed under their recommendations. But a lot of the schools, as you noticed, had, their first thing was, was thanking you as a board. They wanted to say thank you and how much they appreciated you attending their meetings and listening to their concerns and that kind of thing. So, they're, they're very appreciative of the process and how local school councils work and operate. And we appreciate them.
I think it's probably our favorite, my favorite part of the job is going to those meetings, because we really get to learn what's unique about that school and what they're doing. And I think that's how we learn what's going on.
You really do.
We learn more than anything there. So, I really enjoy it. So, it's also a good time for these reports, because then if there's any, any needs with the capital improvements, with Mr. Amerson analyzing everything, now is the time to know. So, this is the right time.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We have some action items tonight. We have the final budget approval for fiscal year eighteen with Mr. Rick Gunn. The final, final.
Final, final. I hope it's the final. Well, today's been a busy day. We got the fourth version of our tax digest. And I had just sent you all an updated PowerPoint yesterday. That was based on version three. And the only two changes that we had had since the original budget was we've added two positions. One was a technology clerical position, and another was a psychologist. And those are the only two things that have been added. We got the, as I said, we got our fourth digest today around two o'clock. So, I've been making changes on a lot of things, but I have not been able to update the PowerPoints yet. The original budget that you tentatively approved, if you look down on, on the page, we had initially, right here, we're showing two million seven hundred and ninety-six thousand going into fund balance. This is the PowerPoint I had sent you yesterday. Since then, it has changed based on the digest. Exemptions went up, value of the digest went up, the reassessments went down. So, the net digest overall also went down. So, instead of being two point eight million going to fund balance, it's about one point five is what we'll be going.
That's quite a difference.
And of course, I'll update that and send you the PowerPoint with that change. Also, along with that, since that went down, the revenue for the debt service budget went down about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, that was a net effect on that. So, it wasn't significant there. It wasn't large here. The initial budget that you tentatively approved had eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars going to fund balance. And right now, we're actually more than that. It's going to be about one point six million going to fund balance.
Okay, that's good.
So, those are the only changes that we had made to the actual budgets themselves, other than the two positions I mentioned. Are there any questions on the general fund budget? We'll, we'll get into the millage rate after we do the, the general fund final approval. And we can go into more detail when we get to that point. But any questions on just the, the general fund, debt service, capital project budgets?
Even though this was the fourth and final, final, final.
Fourth version, I hope.
If they haven't processed all the appeals, it could change again.
Possibly. Today, the digest I got is the one that they're saying they're running all of their ads with. So, it's the one that we'll be running all of our ads with, because they're, because they're not rolling their millage rate back either. And when we get to the, I'll discuss that piece of it. But basically, myself and Dennis Baron, he works in the Tax Assessor's Office. We work together each year to make sure our stuff is what it's supposed to be. He takes it all down to the state, to the Department of Revenue, and he, they verify everything. So, he verifies all of our stuff. So, I use him as a sounding board for a lot of, of what they're doing, and they're not rolling theirs back. He sent me copies of our ads today. And I'll be doing the same with him tomorrow, sending him our ads. Because we have to, we have to advertise that we are not going to roll it back three times. And I'll, I'll get to that when we get to the, to the, to the millage rate approval. But last month, you gave tentative approval to this, to the general fund budget. We ran the ad, which ran basically a couple of days after we had the meeting. So, everything's ready for the general fund budget to be, to receive final approval. So, are any, any questions that are on any of this?
Just, you know, just kind of recap, big picture stuff. You know, number one, this budget allows us to add for the positions we need it for growth. So, you know, no change in class size. We were still able to give the allotments that we have given for years based on that formula. Number two, all employees in the system will receive an amendment to two percent cost of living adjustment. Those who are going up a step will get the step as well. It's the third year in a row you've been able to give a cost of living adjustment. That's significant. We've, we've hit our fund balance target, and, and now we have received news that we will have the highest possible rating for bonds, which is huge. We're the only fourth school system in the state of Georgia to reach that level in less than seventy system-wide.
Seventy-six nationwide.
I mean, nationwide. Seventy-six nationwide.
Seventy-seven now, counting us.
Seventy-seven, counting us.
Seventy-seven.
Time coming, getting to that point. And we're able to do all of that and keep the millage rate at seventeen point three, you know, without the rollback. So, yeah, I think it's very fiscally responsible, takes care of the needs of our kids, and keeps us moving forward. So, I'm proud of it.
Plus, we have a big rise in the retirement, the TRS.
So, it's like four, four something million, right, for TRS contribution?
Right.
Which is huge.
That's, that's, that's next year.
About a half a mil.
It's like eighteen, I think, eighteen.
It was almost an eighteen percent increase this year. Next year, it's going to be almost twenty-four.
Kidding?
Is this going to be a trend from now on?
I hope not.
It doesn't make catch-up, according to Dr. Evans.
I think that's the case.
Yeah, we were all shocked when we saw that number.
We saw the next one coming, too.
So, it's, it's nuts what they're, what they're doing.
So, that, I would recommend approval of the F Y eighteen budget as presented.
All right, do we have a second? We have a motion by Ann and a second by Nancy to approve the fiscal year eighteen budget. All in favor? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, and that flows to the adopting the tentative millage rate.
Yes, that's the next step. Okay, now, current millage rates, maintenance and operation is seventeen point three, debt service is two point four oh one eight. With the revised digest I received today, number four, the rollback millage rate would be sixteen point four nine four for the maintenance and operation, and two point three zero six for debt service. So, those would be the, the rates. And what happened when we got the new digest, because of how the numbers all sorted out, the actual rollback rate is less than what it would have been had we not gotten the revised digest. Because the way that, it's just the way the numbers shifted, reappraisals went down, some other things went up. So, the rollback rate initially was like sixteen point two. So, now it's sixteen point four nine four. So, that, that helps us with that. I mean, it's, we're not, we wouldn't have had to roll it back that far. We would have had to roll it further than this, let me put it that way.
Right, right.
So, the...
So, I was going to say, I recommend the F Y eighteen millage rate, M and O millage rate at seventeen point three, and debt service at two point four oh one eight.
Okay, do we have a motion to keep our millage rates the same as they were last year?
So, move.
Second. Motion by Nancy, a second by Ann. All in favor? That is unanimous.
And then you see at the bottom, as, as Rick has been pointing out, we do have to have three hearings. The first one will be July sixth, at six o'clock, and then July eighteenth at nine, and five. And then we'll have the final approval at the six o'clock meeting on the eighteenth. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Rick and Steve's here tonight, too, from the Finance Department, and everybody in the Finance Department for their work on, and all the department heads for putting this budget together. It's been seven or eight months of a lot of work and a lot of hours, and it's a budget I hope you're proud of. I know I am.
That's all I have.
All righty. We are down to points of information that care.
No, we dug the strategic.
I'm sorry, I pressed it out already. Well, sorry, Jennifer. Trying to get you home, Jennifer. This one's another long process as well.
Okay, I wanted to pull up on mine the strategic plan site that we've had. If I can type. Our current strategic plan, and this is for our visitors and people that are watching, too, is if you go to Inside F C S Strategic Plan, there's the current plan. It was a three-year plan. And if you click right there, you can see all of the work that we've done in almost the past year. So, this is a recap of it very quickly. So, about this year, about, no, it was last fall. When we got together last fall, we worked with G S B A and Glissey, and they came in to facilitate the process for us. And we had a committee that was comprised of the board members and cabinet, and that was the Strategic Planning Committee. And so, it started off that we wanted to review all of the data. And the data that we reviewed, that we reviewed are actually on this website. So, people can go in and review that. We looked at school district data. We also looked at some state data, too. We looked at school district data, we also looked at some state data, too. And then we went to our community. We had 180 stakeholders come in, and they had a focus group and provided us feedback. And then we did an online survey, and there was over 7,000 responses for the online survey. And the online survey responses have been helpful on other initiatives that we've done this year. We used it for advanced ed accreditation, we used it for the learner profile review, and we also used it for dual-language immersion planning. And so the Strategic Planning Committee, which were the board members and the cabinet members, they had three meetings. All of the agendas and the information are posted on this website. At one of the meetings, we had a big discussion about our core values, our vision, our mission, and our beliefs. And one of the things that came back from the committee is that we revised the mission. So you have that before you tonight. The new recommended revised mission is to, we prepare and inspire all learners to lead and succeed. However, we did not change the vision, we did not change the beliefs. So this would be a five-year strategic plan, which is different than the last two that we've done, which have been three-year strategic plans. So this would expire in 2023. Part of this, we incorporated advanced ed work. So people that have been following along with our strategic plan work, we kind of stopped it in the fall and said, let's wait until we get our feedbacks from advanced, or feedback from advanced ed. And I think that was a great idea, so we did incorporate our recommendations from advanced ed into our strategic plan. So our strategic plan has three goal areas, and each of them are aligned to the advanced ed goal areas now. Advanced ed has, or they call them domains, they have three domains. So our first goal is learning and growing, and that aligns to learning with advanced ed. The second is culture and climate, and that aligns to leadership. And the third is operational excellence, which aligns to resource. So the strategic plan that we provided to you, we have those three goal areas, and they all have performance objectives. The first one, learning and growing, has three, culture and climate has two, and then operational excellence has eight, I mean, has three. So we have eight total performance objectives. We're excited that this strategic plan has performance measures, and it has a baseline, it has five-year targets outlined. We also have detailed initiatives listed, too, in the strategic plan. We have action steps, we have a primary person responsible for all of these steps. We have evidence that indicates the impact, and we're monitoring actions, too, as well as implementation dates, estimated cost, funding, and sources and resources. So after this is proved, what we'll do as a staff is that we'll continue to work with GLISI and GSBA, and we'll come up with some measures and monitoring processes for the staff, and then also to keep the board updated and involved. And we've been talking about them coming back in the spring as part of our continuous improvement process for department improvement planning and school improvement planning, so we can get back together as a committee and review where we are with the strategic plan. Because it was very important to everyone involved that we keep this fresh, we keep it current, and we keep it updated. And of course, we communicate it to the stakeholders, too. So I just wanted to thank everyone for their time and energy and the hard work that they developed, that they devoted to developing this plan, especially the board members, cabinet, GLISI, and GSBA. And I also wanted to thank the many stakeholders that provide a thoughtful input that will enable us to continue to be responsible in growing of our needs of our community and to maintain our tradition of excellence that was started many, many years ago with strategic planning. And that is, any dynamic organization, our strategic plan is an evolving document. It's meant to establish and communicate priorities and resources as well as harness the passion and energies of Forsyth County schools. So at this moment, I would like to ask the superintendent to please make a recommendation to approve the 2017-2023 strategic plan.
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion to approve the strategic plan?
Second.
Motion by Ann, second by Nancy. Any discussion?
Just wanted to thank everybody for all the hard work. Something like this is just brain-numbing, but you have to go through it. And when you look at the history of the strategic plans in our whole district, it has been a very strong point of why we are where we are, is because we kept to that strategic plan over the last 20-odd years. So it's, thanks for everybody's work.
All in favor? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, for leaving that. Now, Dr. Beard, any points of information, anything?
I have nothing to report tonight, other than what's been included in your packet.
Okay. All right. Well, then, do we have a motion to go into executive session for purposes of personnel?
And.
And, oh, yeah.
Tribunal.
Tribunal.
Heard the affidavit. Second.
All in favor? And that's it.